All right, good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. It is now time to start the January 30th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Ms. Alondra, can you please call for roll?
Yes. Ishmael Harris.
Here.
Christopher Toth.
Here.
David Barrow.
Here.
Gary Moss. Jordan Scott is not here. Patrice Parsons.
Here.
Keith Alborn.
Here.
Joshua Binghamman is not here. And Jeffrey Estes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. On to citizen comments. Do we have any additional since we've walked in? Any, well, not additional, but has anyone?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, on to item three. A, consider an act to approve meeting minutes from the December 19th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Make a motion to accept as written.
We have a motion and a second.
Can you, who's second?
Uh.
Thank you.
Estes.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Christopher Toth.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Here.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. On to item 3B. Consider an act on the Pecan Park Commercial Lot 2 final plat of a portion of a 38.544 acre tract of land at the Nancy Blakely survey, abstract number 98, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, being .895 acres located south of State Highway 71 and east of Orchard Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas. All right.
Good afternoon, Commission members. James Ky, Development Services, covering for Kennedy tonight. Before you in your package, and help me with my clicker, somebody. There we go. So this is a one lot final plat we're bringing to you tonight. You see the location here outlined in green. It's basically between City Market, the barbecue place, and Austin Tell. There's an existing, if you look in your package, let me go to the next drawing. So all utilities are in place. There's an existing, so it's text dot controlled for access. The cross, there's an existing joint access easement from the joining lot to get to the property. And currently developers just creating a commercial lot for future development or proposed development at this time. So when it meets all of our requirements, utilities are in place, and access is through that cross access easement. There's more detail in your package, I'm just trying to keep it short and simple. Drainage is part of a master drainage system, which is also in your package and staff report on page 11. So drainage is addressed, utilities are in place, and access is in place, and it meets all of our requirements. Any questions?
Commissioners, we got any question? Commissioner Moss.
Do we know what's going in there?
Just a proposed future commercial lot and part of an overall future master development.
Yeah.
There's some portion that's left, if I can show that real quick, go back to it maybe. Orchard to the left is being discussed and being punched through, so there's some remaining, that large piece of south is being left, but it's going to be have frontage off Orchard at a later date.
Can you say that again?
Sorry, so the Orchard, if you look to the left, so the proposed lot has a cross access easement from the lot next door. That's their access off the access road. Orchard, as you see in the drawing here to the left, is in, being discussed to be extended at a later date, and that'll be the access for future, future lots.
Go ahead, Commissioner Toth.
Um, yes.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Sorry.
Thank you. No worries. We need the audience at home to be able to hear as well.
Sure. Um, can you please, for, for our benefit, give us a little bit more situational awareness of what, you know, I, I've read your description, it's on the 71 Axis Road, but for instance, what's to the, what's to the east and what's to the west of it?
To the west is the barbecue place, South Side Market.
Okay.
The big white, South Side Market.
Perfect.
That's your best, the big pecan orchard, everybody knows what the big pecan orchard is, to the west.
Okay.
As you go past the pecan orchard, you have South Side Market.
Got it.
You go, there's just a vacant lot, which is part of that big piece to the south. They're just subdividing this one lot out for right now. Future connection will be off Orchard. And to the right, to the east, you have the telecom place. And then we go to the next page.
It's awesome, telco. So it's the, it's in between the bank and the South Side Barbecue, it's a perfect lot right there.
Again, I'm going fast, I apologize, because we want to spend a lot of time on trees. You go back to the other one, Sylvia, please. If you look to the right, which is also Telo, you see in that far right corner, text dots are going to give them another drive approach. When they planted that lot, there's a joint access easement, that'll be their access off of 71.
So we're not adding another driveway cut?
Any questions? Go ahead.
Commissioner Moss.
The Commissioner's edification and the folks at home, this, this portion of Orchard will come down to here. That is the responsibility of this property owner, who is developing here. This is supposed to be office at the front, office, mhm, office space at the front part. Lower part, we have some proposals. It's a more than likely adult multifamily or adult assisted living. And we're working through the final condemnation agreement that Orchard then jogs off over to the west and completes all the way down past Agnes into a future connection down at the bottom called Green Leaf Fisk that's on the master transportation plan.
Where does Green Leaf?
Thank you.
Is Green Leaf going to connect to Shepherd's?
At some point, yes. They all connect, they're east-west connections. We have a lot of land acquisition that needs to happen for Green Leaf, so it'll be a while.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Got a proposal.
All right, what do you have?
To accept as written. Approve it.
What is your proposal? What do we need to accept?
Approve the final plat.
Can you, can you, can you give some? Final plat?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all we need. That's all you need, sir?
Final plat.
All right. That works for him.
Second it.
All right. Would that work for the first and the second, or does Commissioner Moss need to clarify?
Right. Please, yes, that's, yeah, let's get that. Thank you.
So one more again, Commissioner Moss.
So you know?
Uh, can we, I need you to clarify your motion, please, so we know exactly what it is.
The motion would be to approve the final plat of Pecan Park Commercial Lot Number 2.
That's what y'all said.
Can you say exactly that, please?
To approve the final plat of the Pecan Park, is it the?
Pecan Park.
Back here, so I can read it. On the Pecan Park Commercial Lot 2 final plat for approval on the portion of the 3.8544 acre tract.
All right, that sounds well enough.
I'll second Commissioner Moss's well spoken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a first and a second.
Yes.
Can we call for roll, please?
Yes. Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Christopher Toth.
All right, aye, yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, passes unanimous. Thank you. All right, on to item C. We're going to hold a public hearing to consider an act to amend section 6.3.004, protected inherited trees to decrease the caliber per tree. That will be protected from the future development. This amendment seeks to increase protection of trees by reducing the caliber inch when mitigation begins from 13 caliber inches to smaller. Ms. City Manager.
Hello, Commission, thank you, presenting for Kennedy, who is out. I did want to introduce our newest member of the team. As the Commission may or may not be aware, the city changed legal providers. We now have the Denton Navarro as our law firm. The Denton Navarro firm comes with a planning team. Amanda Padilla is a planner with the law firm, and so she will be joining our planning commission. Can keep us much better in line than any attorney could, I think.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, so all of the items we're going to be discussing today relate to trees. They've been vetted by the Parks Board, we've had outside influence and discussion. There's one discussion item or so that the Commission has to consider, and that relates to the timeframe, whether it's a certain time limit or perpetuity of tree protection. So this one's fairly easy. State law allows the lowest protection that we can protect a tree is 10 inches. Our ordinance currently says 13 inches, so we're just trying to reduce it to 10 inches to match state law. And that above on the screen is the, where the change would take place in the code.
Is that all you have for that?
That's it.
All right, I'm gonna open up a public hearing. Do we have any comments on this?
No, not at the time.
Okay. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have any, well, before, sorry, before I close it, I see we have some lights on, excuse me. Go ahead, Christopher. I mean, Commissioner Toth.
I can wait.
You can wait till the end, or?
Unless you're asking.
Commissioner Estes? Your light's on, do you have anything? All right, all right. So, okay, now I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, on to item number two.
Did you have any questions on this one, or it's a different item?
That's, that's what I was trying to see.
Right, no.
Okay.
I'm good to go, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to call the vote on this one?
Oh, yes. Sorry, thank you. Can we call for the vote, please?
So, I need a motion.
A motion, thank you.
One question first. We heard this the very first time, and pecan trees weren't on there?
Correct.
And then we had the discussion that potentially pecan trees weren't on there. Did we reevaluate and speak to an arborist?
Um, we have a tree protection list, that's in our next section, that's a couple sections over, we'll, we'll get there.
I apologize.
That's okay. That's okay, yes.
You have to ask each one, please?
Yes.
Yes, we will.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, let's see here, this one. Protect the trees by reducing the caliber inch, which mitigation begins from 13 caliber inches to smaller.
Yes, and that is amending section 6.3.004, protected inherited trees.
Okay, does she need to add that to hers?
I said it, I said it into the record.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can you call for roll, please?
Uh, yes. Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Christopher Toth.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
And Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and passes unanimous. On to number two, please.
Amendment 6.3.004, this is adding a tree survey, which is really a process of how we get to understanding what tree protection, what trees need to be protected. Obviously, there's going to be some credits in the tree ordinance for diseased trees, those kinds of things. And there is a penalty of $250 that we'll show in a later slide.
$250 per tree? Yeah, that's, yeah, it's just one time charge, or?
It's per caliber, I believe.
Is it, yeah, it's.
Per caliber.
Per caliber.
My apologies, per caliber. Let me, let me double, quadruple check that.
So currently, the mitigation cost starts at 150 per caliber inch.
Caliber, mhm.
Yeah. Um, the Parks Board recommended to increase it to 250 per caliber inch. That's.
Per tree.
Per tree.
All right. I'm gonna open up a public hearing on this agenda item. Do we have any citizen comments? All right, we don't have any. Do we have any questions? No discussion. All right, I'm going to call, close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Go ahead, Commissioner Estes.
Okay, here we go. Are you gonna do it?
I think you've got it down here.
So, I want to add an amendment.
Okay.
To add requirements for the tree survey and also adding penalties when not followed.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
By amending 6.3.004.
All right, yeah, you gotta throw that in there.
Protected inherited trees.
You have to throw the last portion in there. It, it goes now, since.
I read it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it goes, we're good now. Okay, so second.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we call for roll, please?
Sorry, yes. Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Christopher Toth.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. It passes unanimous. On to 3C.3, hold a public hearing to consider an act to amend table 2.1.003, preferred plant lists in the technical manual to add the pecan amongst others and remove some current trees. This amendment seeks to add additional species to the existing plant lists and remove some trees based on the recommendations from the Native Plant Society and Independent Arborist. Madam City Manager.
Uh, that's just it. We have some invasive species shown in our prior list, and there were trees that our resident experts said needed to be included. I, this was the original list. There was a request to group it, group it by native trees, invasives, acceptable, blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera. I don't know that you can, can you zoom into that, for example? There's your pecan.
So the ones in green?
The ones in green were from our previous, already, the previous list.
So these are the, the ones in white are being added, or taken out, or what?
The ones in white are being added.
Okay.
Mhm.
Yes.
I don't know if we need to add it.
Yes, that's why it was easier to go with the green for the new and then leave the white.
I had a question. Why is bald cypress on there, knowing the water situations we have here? Because that tends to be a water tree, takes a lot of water.
I'm gonna wait till he opens up for public comment, because we have an expert in the audience.
Good.
If it's not required, I'll go.
Okay, wait, well, when you, when you get up here, we'll, we'll get you, hold on. You'll have your time.
So this is, um, this is essentially the item, there, there is an item for discussion here, as it relates to the trees. So we have a requirement for the trees to need to be replaced in five years, you know, within five years. And that really should be changed to in perpetuity. We want them to maintain the trees on the site, and so we will make that as a process. But, and that was the discussion, and I see a lot of the nodding of the heads, is it going to have any issue with in perpetuity versus five years? Because it's a little bit unclear. I'll go back to, can you un? Just un, zoom out, back, back to the normal. There was the, uh, strict compliance, oh, we missed an item. I'm sorry. The, I'm sorry, can you reopen that section, because you missed the penalty? Strict or moderate penalty? The prior item. Can you reopen that item? Chair.
Oh, sorry. I was, I was reading what was on there.
Number two.
Okay. All right, I need to reopen.
Yes.
The public hearing.
3C.2.
Yes, for 3C.2. Uh, open up the public hearing to consider an act to amend section 6.3.004, protected heritage trees. To add the requirement of a tree survey, add penalties and further explanation of the requirements for tree protection. You want to read the?
So, no, you're good, right there. So what I missed on this section is a recommendation also from the P&amp;Z on whether we want to do strict compliance, which is what the board recommended, or if we want to do what we're calling moderate compliance. And so strict compliance is trees shall be a minimum of four inches in diameter. We have to have a discussion of that. Trees of four inches in diameter are a little bit harder to stay alive, is what folks have said. And so we may want to discuss two inches in diameter.
What page does that correspond to in our packet? Thank you.
21, maybe?
It is on.
I just looked at it, where is it? Uh.
Uh, 22. 22.
22, yeah. It's a, yeah, there we go. It's a lot of red.
There's, there's two sections, protected trees, it starts at the top of 21. Basically, we're using the same language for section.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
It could, it starts at the top of page 21. We're in the same section, except the code has it in the regular code and on also the technical manual, so staff has to bounce back and forth.
It's protected, and you're.
So, item number one is four inches in diameter. That, that is a question. So if four inches in diameter are more difficult to sustain, my belief is we won't have a good, solid replacement on a regular basis. We'll have to go through the code enforcement process. So that is something for the Commission to consider. The second part is that the, the comment says shall be maintained for five years, and really, that's a clarification, that tree needs to be maintained to perpetuity. That is on page, 22 middle, it is option one, strict.
So, the, the two options that y'all would have to choose from is, or unless you'll make a different motion, would be the four inches and the three inches of the replanted tree. So originally, I think, um, I, yeah, so the, the Parks Board made the motion to, or the recommendation to do it to three inches. But as Sylvia said, bringing the, the inch down to two inches.
On both of those sections is, number one, an ease for staff, and number two, ensures that the trees stay alive. And when you open it up for public comment, I'd like our arborist to chime in.
So the Parks Board, how many?
Three. Four and three.
Four and three, and you're recommending?
Two and two.
Two and two.
Two and two. That's, and the position is, one, from a maintenance perspective, if the two is easier to get and easier to stay alive over that period of time, I will be fighting with somebody through a code enforcement process when the four inch tree dies. And it just seems odd that you'd replace a four inch tree required with a three inch caliber tree. I, I don't, I didn't understand the rationale through that. Acquire four, but you can get away with the three.
Question.
The cost.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
The cost of replacing the trees are on the landowner.
On the landowner.
Correct. So if we vote in perpetuity, it's just really a headache for the city to maintain the tree, to maintain the code and compliance of the trees, because if it's on the landowner in perpetuity, whether it's four inches or three inches, it doesn't really matter.
No, the landowner has to. And the example that I use right now.
Work is on them.
Yeah, the work is on them. The example that I use right now is the pecan orchard that we talked about off of Orchard Parkway, for example. The well, the property owner passed, the well went out of commission, and a lot of those trees died because they weren't being watered. I don't have a way to say you need to go, you know, maintain the trees. And so in that case, a lot of the trees that are already dead or diseased won't count toward anything. When they're removed, they'll be removed.
To move by?
The landowner. Mhm. But in the case of perpetuity, that's why it's important for me, because the way it reads, and Doc brought this up, the way it reads is it appears that the tree only has to survive for five years, and then after that, you know, if it goes away, it goes away. And that's not the intent. The intent is the tree is a viable tree, a good tree, and it survives in perpetuity on the land, unless there is a different development and they go through the tree survey and replacement process.
Commissioner Estes.
Couple of questions. Is this only for the native trees?
It's the native and the heritage trees.
And that's, so any other tree does not count towards this?
Any other tree.
Yeah, like a trash tree, I call them trash trees. They just come up on your property, you know?
Just go through some random soil?
Yeah, I mean, over on, in, in Riverside Grove, these trees grow all the time, that, just wild.
So, so no, so what we are counting are trees as part of new development that are going to be either tried to be cleared, and I need a good tree survey and a good plan to try to save as many of those trees, and receiving credit for newer existing.
Okay. And then, the only way that a tree can be deemed dead or dying is a certified arborist?
Yes.
Not common sense?
No. We have an arborist on staff.
So.
So if, in town, they have to call the city and say, I need you to come out and, you know?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
Well, and, and the reason for that is, the tree fee to chop down a tree is expensive.
Right.
And so there's nothing for folks to prevent saying, well, the tree was dead anyway, I cut it by the time you got here, sorry, I didn't call you.
Okay.
It really is to protect the heritage trees more than anything, but.
Okay.
And so with that being said.
And we're a tree city.
With that being said, for clarity, right, if, if they, to them, it's dying, and they're like, I just don't want to deal with it, but they have to call the arborist, he comes and says it can be saved, they have to save that tree, correct?
Yes, unless, unless there's a, a variance or some kind of relief granted by, I believe it's Planning and Zoning, actually, right? P&amp;Z gives relief?
Uh, yes, yeah, it would go through Planning and Zoning.
And staffs, we're always going to work with somebody, right? What is, I don't want to say what's the value of the trees, because trees are important. Again, we are a tree city, we're known for our nature. But if the tree is diseased and it is going to infect other trees that are also more valuable, then of course, we're going to work with the property owner, the developer, we're not going to chain ourselves to the tree or anything.
Right, that's, that's why I'm asking, because I don't want, you know, someone to have to continue to battle, and they're like, man, this tree's been beating me up for years, I'm trying to save it, it's just, you know, I can't put any more money into it.
I'm sorry?
For every tree in town, not new development, this is for every tree.
This is new.
New development.
This is new development. When, when you come in to try and, yes.
So, sorry, um, it, the, um, the process for the tree itself would go through our DRC process, it would be administrative if they are trying to-
But if they're appealing?
Yes.
It goes here?
Uh, yes, and then the tree survey is the same situation. If they're appealing the requirement of a tree survey, it would come to y'all and then to council.
So, we have an internal review, and so it'll go through that first.
Commissioner O'Toole.
So, for clarification, you're recommending that we, instead of either using the strict, uh, penalty of replacing them with, I shouldn't call it a penalty, but the, the strict option of requiring a replacement of four inch, or the moderate of requiring a, a penalty of three inch, should we reduce that to two?
Two.
Now, can you explain why again?
One, the ease of, the ease of access of getting a two-inch caliper tree versus a four-inch caliper tree, and what some arborists have explained, the survivability of a four-inch caliper tree. It's a lot easier to maintain and keep a two-inch tree than a four-inch tree, and again, I'll let our-
So, we're gonna have a chance-
Yes.
-for Mr. Thompson to speak about this, and we can ask him questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so before you make any recommendations here, I'll open the public hearing, hear from him, take his word as gospel. He's the expert.
So, you know, you had me reopen up, number two, do I need to close that again, or-
No.
He's gonna speak during that, right? So, we're, the public hearing is open, so. It was already open, sir. I already did that when I opened it earlier. All right. Good gracious.
The question is about the two inch?
Yes, sir, can you please introduce yourself and let us know who you're with?
My name's Luke Thompson. I live in, uh, 216 Wauka Kua Drive, Bastrop, Texas.
Can you come a little closer, please, to your mic, or lift it up?
Is that better?
Yeah, there you go.
And, uh-
Thank you.
The two-inch, I, I know during the Parks Board meeting, they, they went from four to three, and, but two will survive better than the, the larger ones. Most of us that are familiar with this know that a tree this big will survive better than the two-inch. But they're tiny, nobody's gonna want those as part of their landscape, so this is kind of a compromise. But the younger the tree, the more likely it is to survive during those, while it's being developed, if that makes sense.
Can I ask a question? How, can you just explain to me how that works with, you know, extreme weather events, like when it gets really cold and really hot, do the smaller trees survive better when, when we're having extreme weather? I would think they would, but-
They do.
Okay.
And, and it has to do with proper horticulture, and, and a landscape, a professional landscaper, which most developers do retain, will know that, and they'll do the, take the appropriate measures to do that. Mulching is done improperly by a lot of people, but most horticultures know how to do it right, and all that comes into play.
You had a question?
Go ahead, sir.
You through?
No.
Keep talking.
You have one, okay.
So, are we the, are you then saying that most of these developers coming in are gonna have somebody that knows how to do all this stuff, or we're just gonna assume they do, or how do we like, how are we-
We will know real quick if they don't. I, we'll know real quick, but the, but, uh, the arborist is, is, um, gonna have something to say about that, too.
Which arborist?
The certified arborist that does the, well, that, the city arborist does well, but the, the certified arborist that puts his stamp right next to the engineer's stamp on the plating and the planning and stuff, they'll know.
Okay. Thank you.
Question for you. I was noticing here that, that on the twelfth inch tree, it's talking about the height of being seven feet, coming on down to, uh, seems everything seemed to be seven feet tall is part of the requirement. Now, to go down to a two-inch, would that change the height requirements?
It probably would.
Then we need to consider that.
But I, I don't know that it'll be, yeah, that could be something that we'd need to work out.
So, what, what's normal for a two-inch?
Probably a five foot.
Five foot?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we go to two inch, five feet?
Right. And that would be about right, yeah. That'd be about right, yes.
Commissioner O'Toole?
Thank you. Please help me understand real quick the biology of why a two-inch is better than a four-inch, 'cause it seems a little bit counterintuitive. Larger the tree, the larger the root ball, uh, better ability to pull from deeper in the ground, to get moisture, to sustain the plant. So, why, why, from a, from a biological perspective, is a two-inch better than a three or a four?
It's experience, more than anything else. Most of us that have done a lot of tree planting and been involved in some of this stuff have watched the bigger trees die over a period of time. Sometimes it takes five years, three to five years to die. The smaller trees just survive better, and I, I couldn't tell you exactly why, except that I'm assuming that the, the root balls of the larger trees are damaged more than the root balls of the two-inch tree. And so, there is more room for, uh, fungal infections, overwatering infections, a whole slew of things like that. A young tree can take that watering that usually they do to keep them alive for those first few years, first few years especially. So that would be where that comes from.
Thank you. Yeah, one of the things that Mr. Thompson is talking about is called transplant shock. Um, and essentially what it is, is when something lives within a specific container for a certain amount of time, it gets used to that environment, and whenever you change it over to a new environment, it can't take that new environment. So the smaller the root stock, the easier it is. Uh, this is why they recommend digging a hole a time and a half the size of the root ball, uh, so that you can add extra stuff or even the original soil into it. So you're just trying to decrease that, that plant shock, that transplant shock. Yeah.
And, um, I just, my thoughts also, as far as any questions on monitoring the trees, right, is, we can assume that with each project, there'll be walkthroughs from the city, right, to get a tally of how many trees and what they have, and we'll continue on monitoring those things with our inspections, correct?
Sylvia, don't mind, I clarify, and again, Mr. Thompson's expert, but I've been around and stuff, part of the trees we're talking about being lasting longer is a smaller tree, again, life experience growing up country, is, when you have, most of these trees aren't spaded trees in a natural environment. When you spade a tree, put from natural back to natural, most of these trees, correctly or wrong, are potted trees, that are in a controlled environment, they're side by side, there's a guy out there every day watering, trimming, that's in a real controlled environment. When you now take those trees, put out in nature and put them ten-foot apart, you don't have the shading, so, again, a younger, smaller tree, as you said, a stick takes longer, but sometimes that stick will pass a four-inch tree in about ten years, 'cause that four-inch tree just sits there and stays four-inch. Is this is specifically for tree replacement, so you go through, to a, to a tree survey, in that tree survey, you identify how much you have to replace, either through money or through trees. So there was a discussion about cypress trees. What we're gonna do going forward, once we identify they have to replace trees with trees, or the developer chooses to replace, taking out trees with new trees, we had a discussion on two inches, we're gonna identify the proper type of trees through our staff with support, is we're not gonna plant cypress trees in the middle of, of red clay field. Ideally, that's where the preferred list is for future trees. We're gonna look at the type of trees they're planting and the location of where they're planting those trees. You may, live oak's a great tree, but you don't wanna plant it in a two-foot strip, so we're gonna identify the types of trees and the right place to plant them. And then for the enforcement part, we're trying to save trees, but we were saying in five years, we don't care anymore, we had defeated the whole intent of, we wanna replace that tree with a two-inch live oak tree, it's gonna be a nice tree in five or 10 years.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I don't understand, sorry. So, somebody comes in, they wanna do a development, and they wanna take down this many trees, right, ten trees?
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, they're willing to pay, they're willing to do whatever they have to do in order to make it work with their plat.
So let me stop for a second, identify the picture. They're gonna come up with a caliper inch of trees-
Right.
-that they're taking out, they've followed the process properly, we reviewed that through their tree survey, through their arborists. They've identified now how many tree inches are taken out, and some of these big projects, we make them post-bond, because they took these trees out illegally, they have the option, if they do the process right, they're gonna identify, well, how they're, how much they're gonna plant back, and how much they're gonna pay for. The ideal situation, staff is trying to do, we know trees are gonna come out with development, is go back with trees to replace them. That's the purpose of this, is you took out six caliper inches, you go back with so caliper. So the preference is, one, is save the trees, the next preference is putting trees back. So based on how many inches you took out on that project, you go back and replace them with new trees, so inches equals-
Well, my, my only question is, okay, so we, they take out ten trees that are large-
Right.
Right? And they come back and put these puny little two inches-
Right.
-in the project, I mean, it's like, it doesn't-
But the two inches don't equal 24, so if you took a 24-inch tree out, there's so many inches, you gotta get back to that total inches. So two does not replace a 24-inch tree, you look at the inches.
I understand that, it's just that, I'm just thinking about how-
Thinking about the aesthetics?
Yeah.
Right? Like, it's, you gotta go, right, she's, you know, big to small, then-
Or she's a guy transplanting.
Right. So it, it's just a thing of, if it does happen, unfortunately, we're just gonna have to sit there and watch it grow, or maybe the next generation.
The first goal is to prevent clear cutting.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 no. So, the first path is to work with them to try to save that tree. That's the first path. Um, and not allowing a complete clear cutting of a site. That's why they need the tree survey and they need a tree plan. I wanna know what you're going to do. If staff says, no, that's not in the best public interest, that's been a tree that's been protected, you know, it's got blank, 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 we deny it through the DRC process, they have the option to come appeal here to you, and the answer, maybe no, ultimately. But ultimately, the plan is, we try to save as many trees as possible. This has just given us a path through. And it is a replacement, they would have to put 12 two-inch trees to get to that, you know, 24. It's not, it's not ideal. Money's, money's the last thing we want.
I have a question, the city manager. There are a number of communities across the country that have enacted strict rules for developers, that when they're building a parking lot, for instance, I think you can see this in Austin, for instance, they have to leave tree islands. And, for instance, I was just at an HEB office slot at Lane in Austin not too long ago, and I almost felt I was in a park when I was in the parking lot. I mean, there were these beautiful oak trees, uh, all throughout the parking lot, which not only is great for the environment, it's probably great for business, 'cause it encourages people to go there, 'cause there's just a beautiful feel to it, provides shade for your cars on a hot summer day. How are we going about trying to get developers to do those type of things?
Okay, so thank you for, thank you for bringing that up. Today, we don't have what is called a landscaping ordinance, because the code pushed it to a, uh, they call it this interaction of the public and private realm. They push the trees out into the public right-of-way. We have some calipers that are counted, but it's a caliper total, you know they're gonna put those trees wherever. Our landscaping ordinance should, once it's modified, bring it back into the private realm. I shouldn't have to maintain their trees that they planted as part of their development, which is what I'm gonna have to do on Blakey. I'm now gonna have to maintain those trees and that road when those trees come up looking for water. But, um, what you're talking about is, there's normally a tree that's required every, like, 10 spaces, um, and we are moving toward that in our, um, parking regulations. I have to have a parking regulation first, though.
So this, this will fall in the parking regulations, then?
Yes.
Okay, but that's something that's on the horizon for Bastrop?
That's on, that's on our radar. One, for the heat effect, if nothing else, and two, the trees and the impervious cover, there's a direct correlation to how hot something gets, uh, just the environment that it begins to create when it's a sea of asphalt. Not to mention how bad it is when there's a bunch of, um, concrete and water running off of it, and we don't have a regional drainage system where the water lands to get cleared and cleans before it hits the Colorado, so.
Yeah, and I think it's important that we have something set up that if a developer comes in and gets a piece of property that doesn't have any trees on it, that it's not just something we have for the roads to have trees, like, there needs to be something in that parking lot, like, a certain amount, 'cause nothing is worse than walking outside on a hot day and seeing a bare parking lot, man, it's dreadful walking to the car. And so it's like you're saying, Commissioner O'Toole, seeing those trees, that makes it a little bit more pleasing when you're walking out, you know, so.
And there, you know, at, the tree, the tree has a tree island that's in it, that's impervious cover, it's, uh, the numbers add up and it ends up being a benefit to everybody involved. So, yes, one, I have to have a parking regulation first, and two, I have to bring back the landscaping regulations.
All right, Commissioner Alborn?
Quick question. Uh, if you have a, an older mature tree, a live oak, and maybe he's 10 years old and it dies, do you replace with the same type of tree, or do you test the soil to see if something might have killed the tree?
Ideally, you should, are you, in a, on a private or a public side?
Either or.
So, I'm not gonna tell you that you have to put back a live oak, 'cause that's not how, that's not what we do?
My concern was if there's, if the soil's contaminated, it killed the tree, maybe it just would affect a live oak, and you could maybe put a maple in or something else, it would survive.
Perhaps, that would be a good question for the arborist to come out, and our arborist does give recommendations.
Soil, soil testing, or they-
No, they don't do soil testing.
Unless it's required.
But there are, like, our ag commissions around the area have soil testing kits, where you can test the pH and those kinds of things. I don't know if it tests disease, but we can certainly look into that.
Okay.
Thank you. You got anything else?
So, just circling back, so we've got a couple of things to consider on this slide. So the four inches to the two inches, um, we've got the, um, uh, da-da-da-da, oh, uh, the five years, so this says dead or dying within five years, the date was planted, and that really should just be in, maintained in perpetuity.
Height.
Mm-hmm. Oh, and then, yes, instead of seven inches and, uh, seven feet in height, it should be five feet in height.
Two to five. So you need to amend the motion?
Yes.
The, right, Commissioner Estes needs to amend his motion, correct?
That's if you, if you want to go to the two, if you wanna go to the two inches.
So do you catch that?
And, you know, Terry, Terry Moore is here, who's the Parks Board liaison, you may wanna come speak as to why they chose four and three.
Ms. Moore, would you like to come speak?
It was exactly what Luke-
You got, you gotta throw it up here.
Thank you guys very much for considering this. This is really an important issue to our Parks and Recreation Board, and as far as up to our community, and thank you for letting us have input on this and, and helping you to make that decision. The, it's really the, the life of the tree, right? The two to four inch is exactly what Luke was talking about, the, you know, the viability of the tree.
Is that why they went to three?
There was some discussion around the table of which one is which, you know, is it two, is it three, is it, it's, it's definitely, they wanted to go less than four, um, but I think everybody around the table kind of agreed to on two.
But it's written as four.
Mm-mm. It's written as four. And so you're saying the Park Board agrees with two?
Did I say it backwards?
So the, the Park Board recommended three.
Yeah, that's, it's-
Sylvia?
It was a, I was thinking it was, you were gonna say it was a compromise to meet in the middle, 'cause we've been saying three, right? So.
Sylvia, would this be used to develop the landscape, uh, program?
No, that's, that's gonna have an entirely, that's gonna have an entirely different-
Don't think this has anything to, yeah.
We're okay with two, y'all are okay with two, we're okay with two.
Okay. All right. All right, let's, let's get some clarity here.
Terry?
Yeah, let's get some clarity here, 'cause-
So, okay, so let's go, so, uh, the, uh, replacement tree shall be a minimum of two inches in diameter, measured, uh, 12 inches above the ground, and five feet in height when planted. And then the, um, dead or dying within five years. Yes.
All right. Commissioner Estes, you, do you got that?
So I made a motion earlier on number two, right?
Yes.
And now, after that motion, I have to amend it. I thought, why didn't I vote it?
Okay, well, let me, let me-
If it wasn't finished.
So we, she asked us to-
Reopen it.
Reopen the public hearing to, uh, go back over something that-
Gotcha.
-was skipped over. So real quick, before you do that, let me close the public hearing. Okay, now.
Okay. So this can-
So we're looking at adding a minimum of two inches, five foot high plant, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I've got it all written down. Did you need me to go ahead and say the same thing I said before and then add that?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Oh, boy. Okay. So, um, section 6.3.004, protected inheritance trees, to add the requirement of a tree survey to add penalties, and, replacement tree should be a minimum of two inches in diameter, at 12 inches above the ground, and five feet in height when planted, in that a ISA certified arborist deems a replacement tree as dead and dying within five, I mean, in perpetuity.
Yes, the tree must be replaced in perpetuity.
Yes. Is that it?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. You, you called who the second was, okay. Let's go for roll, please.
Uh, Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Christopher Toth.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Uh, Patrice Parsons. Keith Alborn.
Yes.
And Jeffrey Elsis.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now I'm going to move to item three. Uh, hold a public hearing to consider an act to amend table 2.1.003, preferred plant list in the technical manual to add the pecan tree amongst others and remove some current trees. This amendment seeks to add additional species to the existing plant list and remove some trees based on recommendations from the Native Plant Society and the Arborists. So, being that you did speak on that a little bit briefly-
Yes.
-do you have anything else to add? Okay, so, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Do we have any?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. All right, can you please state your name and residency, please?
Uh, my name is Scott Harris.
My name is Scott Harris. I'm a, I've been an arborist for 30 years, and I'm a resident of Bastrop County for 25 of those years. The only objection I have, the, the whole ordinance just reads really well, and I'd love the change to two-inch caliper. My only objection are the two trees on the proposed list that are non-native invasive species. That's the Chinese pistachio and the lace bark elm. Municipalities, growing municipalities that encourage or allow non-native invasive species to be planted always end up spending money mitigating the damage they, they do, removing them from wild spaces. The other thing about those particular two selections is they're very fast-growing and inexpensive in the nursery trade, so if there's a palette of choices that includes two very inexpensive ones that look good in a container, the choices are going to lean toward those. So, you'll have a preponderance of, of fast-growing, non-native trees that are proliferating, they're also very short-lived trees, and so that perpetuity becomes a problem when you have a fast-growing, short-lived tree.
Yes, dude.
Chinese pistachio and lace bark elm.
And the what, what's the other one?
Lace bark elm.
Okay.
It's a, it's a Chinese elm, and especially in riparian areas like Bastrop is entirely, they're extremely invasive. Just background, I was the former executive director of Treefolks, who has planted hundreds of thousands of trees in Bastrop County, and, and I know I'm skipping back, but to your point of planting smaller trees, all of those beautiful bald cypress trees on the Riverwalk, I supplied those to the city of Bastrop, they were trees that I got as whips about this long, and we had to plant them twice because the beavers ate the whole first round of them, and those are beautiful fixtures in downtown Bastrop now that were much shorter and frailer than me when we put them in.
Excuse me, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Does that other tree have a different type of name? Because I don't see it on here.
I think lace bark elm, Chinese elm.
Okay, we have Chinese elm. If it's, yeah, okay, Chinese elm is on there, okay.
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of clarification, there's two different lists, and if the staff could please weigh in on this, there's a page 18 and a page 25, and the way I understand this is page 25 is designed to replace page 18, correct? Okay, so, sir, in that case, those two trees that you were concerned about have been, in fact, removed from the, the current list.
They're listed, they're now listed on the invasive.
Invasive list on page 25, that's why.
Obviously, the list from a council member in October.
Ah, okay, yes, no, so those are.
Would you recommend planting those two trees, or you just kind of?
Absolutely not.
No, that's what he said. Do you mind zooming in on the invasive's area for him, please, so he can see that? All right, thank you. So, there, that work for you?
Excellent.
All right. You need to throw your, your lookers on, or you good?
Nope, I'm good now.
All right, awesome, thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, is anyone else there? I didn't, I didn't, I didn't make the list. All right, so, do we have anyone else that would like to say anything? Okay, we're going to close that public hearing, and we need a motion, please.
I make a motion.
On.
I recommend to amend table 2.1.003, the preferred plant list in the technical manual, to add the pecan tree amongst others and remove some current trees as listed in table on page 25.
All right, awesome, we got a, for a motion, do we have a second?
Second, that one.
Got a motion and a second.
Second.
Uh, David, Commissioner Barrow, got it. All right.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Christopher Toth.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, passes unanimously. All right, on to number four, hold a public hearing, to consider an act to amend chapter 10 definitions to include definitions of ISA certified arborists, native plants, and others. This amendment seeks to add clarity.
That's it. We mentioned them in the code, there is no definition of them. I didn't even have a definition of a certified arborist, so, you know, I got an online degree at Arberry School, so I, I mean, that's, I'm making that up, but.
Do you have to do, do you have to do an open meeting?
Yeah, I have to wait for her to say her thing, then. All right, we're going to open up a public hearing. Does anyone have anything? Check that as a no, we're going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion, please?
I would like to amend chapter 10, the definitions to include definitions of ISA certified arborists, native plants, and others.
I'll second it.
All right. Got a motion and a second, roll, please.
Yes, Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Christopher Toth.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss. Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, unanimous, thank you. On to number five, hold a public hearing, consider an act to amend appendix A, fee schedule for tree mitigation fees and establish penalty for violation. This amendment seeks to clarify the cost of mitigation and introduce a penalty for violation.
So, we, you can see the definition, we had tree mitigation, but we didn't have the word fee, so I had tree mitigation, but I didn't have a way to recoup that. $600 per four-inch caliper tree is pretty similar to 150 per one-inch, 150 times four equals, you know, $600, but if it's, it's 150 per caliper inch, and so, the Parks Board actually recommended increasing the fee to $250.
My only question, is that enough? I mean, if we raise it even more than that, can't we discourage, have more, you know, basically give them, you know, more discouragement in terms of chopping down trees? I mean, why 250, why not make it 300?
It is meant to be a penalty.
Yeah, so why not 300?
You recommend 300?
What, do we have an idea of what other cities are using for penalties, or taxing on the penalties?
The 150, so, we stick to the 150, because that was what we currently had, and then the, the ones I was looking at were, City of Keller, I think it was around.
Of who?
City of Keller.
Keller, okay.
I think it was around the 150 as well. I know, I've heard people say that City of, but I didn't look at City of Austin's.
So, the answer is she doesn't have that.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, 600 for Austin, right? So, I'm just kind of curious as far as what cities are with high development, or, or charging, or taxing those developers, right?
Well, I'm just thinking, if we're a tree city.
That's, we're a tree city.
Let's, let's.
And a bird city.
You know, let's keep these guys from trying to chop down the trees. I mean, I would think that the more they have to pay, the more they'll be discouraged from chopping down a tree, especially a big tree.
Terry, was there, what was the discussion at Parks Board?
The cost of 100. I got lots to say.
All right, well, give it to us.
The whole conversation was, at 150, that, you can't replace it. You can't replace it at 100, it's. But you can't replace it for, for the tree per 150 per caliper inch. And that, that was the whole conversation across the board was, 250, actually, they wanted three, that was, the discussion was three, why are we going at 150? Well, let's do 300, that, that will, you know, kind of prohibit them, or at least make them think a little bit about it before they start cutting it down. To, and the board as a whole, general consensus was, can we, can we propose 250?
All right, and I, if, if I'm thinking where you're kind of going with it is, we don't want someone to come in and just say, hey, it's cheaper to chop them all down at this low-end price, and then we just do whatever, right, so.
But isn't that the purpose of all of this?
Right.
You know, to, to try to.
To protect it, right, so, I mean, I think, I think a penalty should be stiff enough to, you know, not, not saying go into the max to where they're like, hey, we can't do what we need to, but, you know, cause people to consider what they're going to do in their development.
Sylvia, did you just say the fee in Austin is 600 per tree?
That's what.
Oh, you said that.
If I could ask a question either of Terry Moore or the city manager, because this, this has to do with the practical application of how we use this, because we're going to discuss penal, we have two penalty provisions here, strict and moderate, that I know we're going to discuss in a question, or in a second, but practically, how is the tree mitigation fee applied as opposed to pursuing a civil or criminal penalty for the removal of trees?
So, hopefully, the tree mitigation happened with staff planning. We saw the site plan, we reviewed, the arborist paid a visit, we agreed that this tree wasn't healthy, or we agreed that these trees needed to be removed, they're going to be replaced, so there is a plan in place. Mitigation fees should only happen when we can't get to a caliper per caliper, Pearl River, for example.
So, this is someone that's cooperating with the city as opposed to somebody who clear-cut something on a Saturday?
Correct.
And that's what the, the strict and moderate penalties will take care of, because I think that might help the entire commission understand how this mitigation fee kicks in, because this isn't for bad actors, correct?
Correct, and so, a mitigation fee, so let me, thank you for, for pointing that out. So, the mitigation fee is somebody who is working with us. They come in, they're showing, they can't reach a certain number of caliper, for whatever reason, and they pay into the fund, that's the tree mitigation fund. They pay into that, we're able to use that money for other things. The penalty that is discussed here is for somebody who is a bad actor, who came in, and even though, number one, we said, don't cut it, or number two, they did it even without us. We know that there are certain, I'm going to call them excavation or clearing companies, that once their trailer shows up, there, nothing stands a chance of living through that trailer. Our job is to make sure we're in advance of that. They're not doing it in the middle of the night, they're, you know, they're working through it. That's why Park Board recommended the strict. From a code enforcement standpoint, they should have done a tree survey, they should have done, there's a number of things that should happen, and that's how I'm able to calculate. There were this many trees, this is how many calipers were there, you owe this amount per caliper, and this is your total bill.
So, we, I think, I, I certainly want to address the penalties, because I, I see some gaps and some issues that we need to fix in those, but that time, do you want to discuss those first before we move on to that issue?
Discuss.
The, the two optional penalties, option one and option two.
$250 per caliper inch. So, my thought on each of this is the tree mitigation fee, when somebody is working with us, somebody's trying to salvage, I'm fine with $250 per caliper inch. The, the bad actor should be when they're doing it against what we're supposed to be doing, and that is where the penalty should be high enough to negate anybody even wanting to do that. They should be working through the process. Or, I don't mind if the penalty is $500 a caliper inch.
Well, does this have any effect on a tree that has to come out?
No.
For their development?
This is, this is for when they're coming in.
I don't think so.
So, when, so, I'm going to give you an example. So, let's say Burleson East, where the goats are right now, had a beautiful heritage tree in the middle of it, and that heritage tree was 24 inches. He has to replace 24 inches, because there's going to be a road right in the middle of that development. He's got to replace 24 inches. He's worked with us in that, there's no fee, he's doing an equal for equal.
Okay.
If he cut it down the middle of the night, then it's.
And this kicks in?
Yes.
Then the, the penalty one or penalty two kick in, okay.
And thank you, Commissioner Toth, for bringing it up to get some clarity, so.
And Parks Board recommended the strict, and I'm not working now.
If I could, whenever you're ready to discuss.
No, go ahead.
Just a, an observation here. We're still on, well, we're on five right now. Four. Okay, so, we're not, we're not including option one and option two hundred penalties as part of four, that's going to be as part of five, just so I don't get ahead of myself. Okay. All right, just a couple of observations. One is, option one appears to be a civil penalty, even though it uses the word conviction, it doesn't talk about criminal penalties or violations such as misdemeanors, how much you, you know, you're going to be fined, or what type of jail time.
Municipal court, municipal court.
Municipal court, of course. Option two appears to be a criminal penalty, so in terms of categorizing them as strict and moderate, first issue is, criminal penalty is always more strict than a civil penalty. So, really, the criminal penalty is what makes this, makes it more strict, because, think about it, would you rather be sued, or would you rather be put in jail? Okay, so that's, that's just the first observation to kind of clarify what is likely to have more impact, but I do think it's important so the city has more options to have both a civil penalty and a criminal penalty, and the city can take its pick from either civil or criminal. And I think you can all imagine there may be a number of reasons for this. If somebody's willing, it, it depends on the level of offender. If somebody does something bad, and they basically are unrepentant about it, then maybe the criminal penalty is better. If somebody does something bad, but then is willing to work with you afterwards, then perhaps a civil penalty works better. I will say this, I think that the option two, the criminal penalty, is written well. My only request would be, before that would be presented to the city council, that the city attorney weigh in.
I was going to say, then I'd like to table this item and let the city attorney weigh in.
Okay, I would say that option one is, is, I think what the law would call unconstitutionally vague, yeah.
No, she's a planner. She's a planner.
But, but I, I've read option one many, many times, and I really struggle to understand how it would be applied, and any penalty doesn't have a deterrent unless it is written clearly, and the average person can understand it, maybe with the help from a lawyer, but it, it's, 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 I'll just be blunt, I think it's very poorly written, and I, I don't think it would be effective, because we don't know what it means. In particular, maybe I'm just being dense, but the, the, the fine of $2,000 per day, that's very unclear what that means.
Yeah.
It almost, it almost motivates people to do all their bad acts in one day, so they only get fined $2,000, as opposed to extend it over a number of days. So, I just think that option one really needs to be discarded and replaced with a more effective civil penalty, which I think we can find from some city around Texas. I think, again, option two is well-written, and I think it is by far the more strict of any penalty we could have that would be civil in nature, and, and I would recommend we keep option two, but have both a civil and a criminal penalty.
Sure, the, the strict option, I think what they were intending to do is, the strict portion of that is keeping the certificate of occupancy from being issued. In, in the minds of the board, nobody can occupy. You can go on and build, you can go on and do what you're supposed to be doing, but you won't be able to occupy, you won't be able to get a CVO to open for business. So, in my mind, option two with the addition of withholding the CVO. So, we'll send it back to legal.
I, I think that would be helpful, we've definitely got to have these penalties.
And on the stricter portion, the fee per day was also the reason why they went with that. So, yeah, but definitely something we can send over to them.
I'd also like to recommend, when you do take it back to the lawyer, you bring it back to us, that we have at least a $300 penalty.
Okay.
And a $500 penalty.
Now, is that for.
Caliper inch.
That's the mitigation fee, though, right?
$300 mitigation fee is what she's talking about, and $500 penalty fee.
I didn't want to do that, I wanted to make it more than that.
We can, we can, well, once it goes to the attorney and comes back, we can, we can discuss that fee again, correct? Right, so, all right, Commissioner Estes.
Do, do we mark trees in areas that we know they're fixing to clear land and say, don't cut this tree?
We do not. The tree survey and the tree plan is required as a portion of the developer.
Okay, because this is all new to me. And do we find out the day that they're going to start clearing, so somebody can be there?
That is in our process now, yes, it wasn't in our process before.
And, you know, my suggestion is, is honestly, take the good from both option one and option two and put them together, and it's obvious that we want a strict penalty.
So, you want a penalty per day, so, just so I understand, you want the, the penalty per day from the strict option, you want to withhold the CVO from the strict option, but you want the option for civil or criminal in the second option?
Yeah. Well, I, I think it's important, and as a matter of fact, I think it's essential, when you're dealing with a situation like this, that you've got to have a civil penalty and criminal penalty, and you've got to give city enforcers two different options. One is the option for dealing with people that, after the fact, at least are willing to cooperate. Option two is for somebody who does something severely egregious and is not cooperating. So, I think having them bifurcated, so there's a civil penalty and a criminal penalty, however you do that, I think is essential for us having powerful enforcement tools, and it, it's very important, and I, I applaud the city manager and the staff for making this happen, because this, this is something that we really need to protect our trees. We have to do it right, though. We don't want to have to come back and rewrite a penalty because a judge throws it out.
Or a developer saying, you can't enforce that, which is, which is what happened to us.
And, and one more comment on that. The reason a criminal penalty and a civil option are important, because in a criminal penalty, you have to prove intent, and a civil penalty, you do not have to prove intent. So, in a criminal situation, you know, if you decide to charge somebody criminally, you may have a complication where people are going like this, no, I didn't tell the contractor to do that, and the contractor says, no, that's exactly what the developer told me to do. You add this, you know, there's always a higher burden for a criminal penalty. It's much less for a civil penalty. It's the difference between a preponderance of the evidence or proof beyond a reasonable doubt. So, having those two options gives the city a lot of flexibility in enforcing this, this ordinance and, and protecting trees.
Love it, thank you.
Thank you for that in-depth conversation. I'm sitting, no, I'm serious, no, like, like, that is greatly appreciated. All right. that is greatly appreciated. All right. Commissioner Moss.
Do all these have to be handled together, one through five?
You've been voting on all of them already. The only one, you're going to table number five.
We're going to table five.
Does that slow it down, the process?
No.
Okay. This goes on...
No, because remember, you have a, you have a P and Z meeting on, no, it's not going to go on, but you have a P and Z meeting on two, four?
Two seventeen.
Seventeen.
Two seventeen. I don't even know the days. I know we have four meetings coming up.
And two twenty-four.
Okay.
So, I have one more question, and I hate to put any more burden on the staff, but could, could we get some idea, you know, about cities in this state that, that care about their trees, and what they charge? Because if those cities are charging six hundred, and we only charge three hundred, I think we ought to think about raising it.
Sure.
They're coming whether or not we charge them. So, they're going to come. And if we, if they, if they come, I'd like for us to do it right.
It's just imperative that we protect ourselves. All right, so. All right, can we get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. We table number five?
Yeah. Oh, wait, wait, wait. I need to...
You're making a motion to table at two, what's our next P and Z date?
Two seventeen, February seventeen.
To two seventeen.
Let me, I got to close the public hearing.
You go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Let me close the public hearing. All right, now we can make a motion.
Okay. Do I need to say the number?
Please.
Got my paper out of order. I got it, I got it. Okay, so, I'll make a motion that we table to amend Appendix A fee schedule for tree mitigation, and establish penalty for violation until the next meeting on the seventeenth of February?
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Ashmau Harris.
Yes.
Christopher Toth.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Quick clarification. The seventeenth is an open meeting to the public. Are we able to take action on anything that day?
Yes, it's how we post the agenda.
Okay. Because we are going to be meeting the twenty-fourth as well, which we will be voting on things.
We will put on the, on the seventeenth, we will put an item for action.
Thank you.
Then I vote yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mary Patrice, Keith Alborn.
Yes.
And Jeffrey Yostis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, passes unanimously. All right, on to item four, updates. Four A, updates from previous meeting.
So, what is this conference? Do we add signs on nine trees? Is this going to make no signs, or are the citizens looking for?
That was, that was me. And I got, I was able to get my answers on that also. Yeah, I talked with...
Yeah, I was going to say, I think you directed your answers on that.
I got my answers on that. Yes, thank you.
Next one was...
Maybe, I don't know if anyone else would want to, but...
Go ahead.
I mean, just with, with us. So, I was wanting to know what we were going to do about signs, but due to us, on item four B, is the reason why we're kind of be on stand still on item, on that item there, so. And that's just because we're going to be reviewing those codes, with taking things from the B three and the previous code.
Yeah, we were going to research, do some others, and then bring back some sign, probably possible changes at a later time.
Thank you.
Bridge, wanted a little more clarification. There were two aspects of the bridge. One was either the Old Iron Bridge, or there was discussion about the, like, a third or fourth bridge crossing. We weren't sure which way y'all wanted to go with that one.
I just asked a question for an update on what we were doing with the old...
Old Iron Bridge?
Where we were at, yeah.
Yeah, so, the Old Iron Bridge had some delays. The first delay was, there was a bat...
Endangered species.
Endangered species environmental study that had to be done, and some survey of some trees, as it relates to the bats close to the bridge. So, they had to delay that to get that done, so that the Texas Parks and Wildlife and U.S. Fishing Game would approve the, the permit for construction around the bridge. The next delay was the state historical landmark did not like the, did not approve of the railings. And so, there was some design that's going to have to go back, and the lights. And so, there's going to be some design that we're going to have to go back, and kind of look at that, and see how we can get that to match, so that it'll get approval of the historical land for the state. So, once we get those, we're probably two months delayed right now on, from when we were going to issue a, a out-for bid. So, once we get those two, it'll go to bid. And then, one year, roughly one year construction after the bid. Splash pads at the parks, I believe that's, we turfed that over to Parks, the Parks Board. They're going to look at it, and they're going to bring back some recommendations at some point for, for how, how that looks, back to council, and see if we can get those funded. Hopefully, we can get the park enrichment fund that we're working on, some open parkland, which we're going to talk about here later, that can help kind of drive the funding for additional splash pads down the road. Impervious cover credits, this was a request we got. It is under staff review. We have our engineering team looking at credits, and how that's assessed at other cities. We're going to do the same thing we've been doing with all of our code reviews, is survey all the other cities, see what they're doing, kind of do an evaluation, see how those other cities fit for what we're doing, and then bring a recommendation to you guys. So, we're working on that. We'll, we'll try to get that to you guys pretty quickly. City council, this was a discussion, topics that were during the last council meeting on citizens' comments, were these three items. And so, we're looking for you as to if these three want to have items brought back. So, when we get to one of the other sections, if y'all want these three items brought back for discussion, and for staff to review these, and come back with some recommendations, we absolutely can. So, we're looking for some guidance on those three. Any questions about?
No, but I just want to say, thank y'all for working on this and getting us back. I know I talked with Alondra last week, and she, they all were diligently working on this information for us, so, thank you.
So, we're going to, yeah, there'll be the next, next, next four B.
Four B. Let's move on to that, please.
Yeah, so I'm going to jump down. We're going to skip the top two. I'm going to jump down to the protecting Bastrop decoding development. So, you see the postcard there to the right side. Everybody should have got those in the mail. Yeah, everybody should have got those in the mail. You're also going to get a follow-up, an official follow-up letter that's going to go out hopefully tomorrow.
When are we supposed to get these?
They're coming.
They're coming.
They're coming.
I got, I got the card today.
Yeah, they come out through the, through the post office.
I got mine yesterday.
Yeah, you'll also get an official, like, letter from the city that's going to have all the official language that's required by state law. Those go out tomorrow. And you'll receive those in your mailbox as well. Those are a little more like black and white, very specific text, and it's going to be like, wow, what is this? And so, so we're going to talk about the topic. So, the protecting Bastrop, decoding Bastrops, those meetings are February seventeenth and February twenty-fourth. And I believe those are six thirty, right? Six thirty at the convention center across the street.
Uh, no, the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth, they are five.
Five.
Yes.
That's right. Sorry. Yep, six thirty for council. My apologies.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
Yes, five o'clock.
They're on the, should be on all the notices.
We have our email.
Yeah, and on that, I had a website. We recommend going to the website, getting, this website has really detailed. We put maps. We also have interactive maps with GIS, so you can go in, search your address. We recommend going there if you have any, any need to look at the map specifically. But, we're going to, topics that we're going to talk about are the minimum lot sizes, we're going to, where those none exist, setbacks, we're going to get those to match the surrounding area. And then, removal of duplex from traditionally single-family areas, which are the P two, P three zonings, and removal of our grid requirement. So, those are going to be our topics. We're going to be talking about when we get to, to the protecting Bastrop meetings. Vivi, turn it over to Vivi for the top two.
Hello, good evening. And this is just a quick little update. So, we did a short-term rental town hall meeting just the other week. So, we are going to be enacting a short-term rental registration policy. And it's just that, it's a registration policy. They're going to, anyone that has a short-term rental technically should already be paying hot taxes to the state. We are going to enact a policy that asks that they register with the city of Bastrop. The registration fee will be twenty-five dollars. Essentially, it'll be an exchange of information, and we'll issue a registration, twenty-five dollars. It's supposed to be, the idea behind it is, is to be a minimally invasive process. We're, we're not trying to over-regulate the use of the STR as far as someone's right to have an STR. There are some specific requirements that we are going to educate the public on when they do operate an STR and live at the house. For instance, I spoke to the appraisal district, and I didn't know this, but apparently, if you are a homeowner and you have a homestead exemption, if you operate that STR for more than fifty percent of the year, you lose your homestead exemption. So, just kind of educating them on some of those nuances that they may not know. So, and those are not rules that we set, that's set by the appraisal district. But, so, it'll be an exchange of information. We'll let them know, twenty-five dollar fee. It'll be a once-a-year registration for twenty-five dollars each year. So, trying to keep it pretty simple. Do y'all have any questions about that? Mr. Moss looks, I see a twinkle in his eye. Oh, no, play.
Let's not forget about the hundred and twenty-five dollar charge to deal with the...
So, we're going to, we've, yeah, we've had lots of comments on that. So, we revisited that. We actually met with our, the attorney, and we kind of talked through that. So, I think what we're going to do is, we're going to really focus on the registration portion of things right now, and focus on that, and getting them registered, and make that, that, so that there's no, the, the goal behind this was no penalty. So, we don't want to penalize anybody.
Could I give them a hundred and twenty-five dollars back in cash?
So, the, the rules still do apply. They still are out there. But, we're just not going to enforce it when you come into, you know, we're going to make, we're going to give you the packet, kind of assist you with it. But, that's how we're going to, we don't want to penal, we don't want to make this a penalty. So, that's, that's how we're going to go about. So, we did remove some of the safety things.
Commissioner Alborn has something to...
I love him, but that's his fireman hat speaking. Really, that's his fireman hat speaking. The reality is, we do have some restrictions on how we, on how we treat short-term rentals. And it, you know, can't be much more than a residential. The require, we don't require tenants, once they leave into, and go rent another house, we don't require them to go get a C of O. So, I'm, we're not trying to make it onerous. Truly, this is a registration, who's here, who's in our midst, who may need help getting out, and are you registered, and are you paying your hot taxes? That's it. I'm not going to go make you get a C of O. He really wants you to do a safety inspection, but I think the attorneys are going to push back pretty hard, and so, it's twenty-five bucks.
Commissioner Alborn.
Just a quick question, go back to four A. You're coming back to us on those issues about the lot size and ADMs and all that?
Uh, tell me, these, the bottom three?
Yeah, the one, two, three, yeah.
Yeah, council made some recommendations. So, yes, we're going to bring those back to you guys.
And these were at Tuesday's meeting.
These were at Tuesday's meeting.
Like Tuesday's previous meeting.
But, we're looking for guidance from you guys for a future, when we go bring it back.
So, council approved the one ADU, the one ADU, and two, if you can meet certain requirements. Council did approve that. Then, there was further discussion from the floor about, if we're really aiming to protect single-family from, you know, keep it as a single-family, then we should really consider what the size of an additional dwelling unit is. My recommendation, my prior cities, and an accessory structure, which includes an ADU, can't be more than fifty percent of the primary structure. That gave some concern to some of the council, going, if I have an eighteen-hundred-square-foot house, I can put a nine-hundred-square-foot. And the answer is, if you can drain it, if you can serve it, then, you know, the answer was yes in prior cities. There was a recommendation that perhaps four hundred square feet, because that's a quote-unquote tiny home, and that should, you know, we should have some limit. So, the council wants us to bring that back for discussion here, to see what the P and Z would recommend.
Also, the square footage on the lot?
Mm-hmm. Square footage of an ADU.
An ADU.
Mm-hmm. And then, there was a discussion of, if you have a tiny lot, should you even be allowed to have an ADU?
Well, that's what I was going to get next. If you have a lot that's maybe three thousand square feet, are you allowed to put up a four-hundred-foot ADU?
Yep. That's, we got to, we got to talk about those things.
That's, that's pretty tight.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and then, just final conclusion, parkland. So, we did take the proposed ordinance to the Parks Board for recommendation. And so, they were in favor of it. So, at this time, we've sent it over to Ditten Navarro. We got some comments back. So, we're just polishing it up, and then we'll be bringing it forward for recommendation.
Which adds a...
Yes, okay. And the parkland ordinance will be, it's going to add what's called a community enrichment fund. And so, there will be a fee per dwelling unit of two hundred and fifty dollars. That's separate and apart from what would either happen for someone dedicating land, and then if they don't want to dedicate, you do a fee in lieu of dedication. Those are kind of things that we have semi-established already, and those are traditional practices. The new implementation will be the park enrichment fee or fund. That's something we've never had before. Those will be funds that can be collected and spent at large. Whenever someone does a fee in lieu of dedication, meaning they don't want to dedicate the required land, that is going to be divided up by two quadrants. Originally, I had proposed four, but after meeting with the Parks Board, they had a really good point, that it would should probably just be bisected by Highway seventy-one. So, it'll be just that, Highway seventy-one. You'll have quadrant number one. So, fees that are collected for fee in lieu of dedication can be allocated throughout quadrant one, which will cross the river. And then, fees that are collected in quadrant two, which are south of seventy-one, those can be allocated also across the river. And the reason for that change, just FYI, and it's very logical in my opinion, is that development is really happening to the west of the river versus the east, because you have topography, toad, different geographic sensitivities. And so, we don't, we want to be able, if we're collecting fees on this side of the river, to still spread love to all of Bastrop, because it's all of Bastrop that needs parks, or has parks that need to be improved. We have some very important historical parks over on the east side of the river, that we want to be able to maintain, improve, and see flourish. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And again, I just want to say, thank y'all for all of your efforts in getting the information out to the citizens, and getting it out early. Look, I understand the, I know it took a lot, right? But, I just want to point it out, so that everyone sees that we really are trying to...
Be transparent.
There you go.
Word out.
I thought you didn't want to use that word.
All right, yes, we are trying to be transparent, all right, as possible, best as possible. So, thank y'all again.
Can I ask one question before we move on from the meetings coming up? Sylvia, who's, what's the structure of the meeting? How's the meeting going to be handled, these public meetings? How are they going to be educated on what's out there, and...
So, very similar to this. You guys will be seated at the table at the front. We'll open it up for public comment. Staff will do a presentation. We'll open it up for public comment. It's at the convention center. The language in the letter that you're going to get is kind of scary. It talks about non-conforming. That's completely lingual, like, legal language out of, straight out of the book, we have to use. So, I think the first meeting will be very populated, but we'll give everybody a chance to ask questions at the microphone. We'll pass out the little cards if they want to sign up, if they would just want to ask questions.
All right. Item four C.
Yes. Four C, do you have anything for four C? Do y'all have anything?
Basically, on four C, we are still working on our comp plan, getting it going. We had an open house last Thursday at Lot Chippala. Again, we want more public engagement, but the public did show out, really had a good discussion. We had one more this past Wednesday, or yes, last night at the library. Again, wish more turnout. But again, the people that showed up, we really had a good engagement with them. We'll have a little display and some pamphlets set up at the Mardi Gras this Saturday in front of the museum. Again, getting the word out, and the more in public engagement, the better. So, that's an ongoing process. And then, that's, that's the main one, other than what we've talked about already.
All right, on to item four D, please. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, thank you, Sylvia, for making such an effort to get the word out. I appreciate it. Good job. Yeah, good job.
All right. Does anyone else have anything for consideration? All right, on to item four E. Monthly report, please, sir.
So, if you want to zoom in, this is again, a kind of a general overview monthly report. You have two pages there in your packet, in the screen. The first page is kind of building metrics, which is the building side. The second page is the planning metrics, which kind of, again, overlaps, they go hand in hand. As you scroll down on the building metrics, probably the biggest thing on this numbers, you're going to see fifteen new single-family. That's mostly Valverde subdivision, which is D.R. Hart, and they're building them as quick as they can. So, on the far right, Dean, help me, Andres, you're going to see fifteen. Main thing, we'll scroll to the bottom, if you don't mind, is I try to give you a highlight of the, the bigger projects. The first one is BISD Mina Elementary New Building. We work real closely with the BISD. We meet with them every Wednesday. Multiple projects we're working on, trying to keep the projects moving, so they can keep up with the, the growth for the school system. This is at Mina. They're tearing down the second building back from the corner. They're completely demolished in that. They'll build a nice, brand-new two-story building. And then, when that's done, they'll tear down the building on the corner, and have a lot more green space. So this is tearing out, down an outdated building and building a brand-new two, two-story new school building. And be a real nice new building once they get completely through. The other one is a new Liberty Dance Center, there's a fitness center there on Hassler. This is a vacant lot, it's gonna be a dance center. The next one is really interesting, trying to get an existing building back in use in the city, working with a commercial, this is the old, somebody help me, the old green building on the, what was it called? Somebody help me, Doc, not Doc, it's right here where the car wash was torn down. It was a restaurant next to a Mexican restaurant, so-
It's the Cheddar's.
Cedars, 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 so.
Cedars Grill, right?
Can someone tell me what it used to be called back in the eighties?
That far back?
In the nineties? Come on, give it to me. That's right. All right, thank you.
So as that building, we're working with two nice young gentlemen who want to be in the, the boils, crawfish, crab, all that. So they're having a lot of work, saying the building's old, they got a lot of remodeling and code stuff to dress, but we're working with them. The next one is the stem and stone, existing stem and stone leased this building here at the Sweet C for like a little banquet hall, so they'll, you know, have a meeting set up there, whatever. So the existing will stay, but this is a place they can have remote meetings, remote events, whatever. The next one is the daycare, there's a daycare, it's Inter Summit Drive, you're familiar with Summit Drive, but at very end of the cul-de-sac is that building. The original owner retired, and new people have taken over, and they've brought it up to code with fire alarms and got it completely up. So it's keeping a daycare back in operation in the city, 'cause there's a big demand for daycare here. 909 Chestnut is this little black building here across from Shell. We're trying to work with them and get that building up to code and get it back in use. The next one is a hospice, this is in a sweet center at Suite 200. Walmart's just doing a tip, little interior remodel. And the bottom one is getting another business back in operation. This is past a roadhouse on Chestnut Street, you know, a roadhouse, there's that Shell building been sitting vacant for years, so we've been working with them and getting that building reoccupied. In fact, they opened this past weekend, so. Again, trying to get these vacant buildings filled back up and occupied, so. Any questions?
Oh, sir, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. All right.
Sir.
Go ahead, I know you're coming. On to item four, five.
I'd like to make a motion.
You don't say. All right. We got a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
All right, motion and a second.